Basically, what will happen, you guys, is you can present to us our information, the information that you have. And then present to us any formal ask that you would have with the Board of County Commissioners. And then from there, what we'll do is move that to our next regular meeting agenda. In order for us to make a formal decision on any kind of ask that's brought forward to us. So that's kind of how we'll start today, and we can go ahead and get started, Kurt, if you're ready.
Okay, I appreciate your time today. I'm guessing that Commissioner Mudge was not able to join.
Yes, Commissioner Mudge had an unexpected personal emergency arise this afternoon. Where she's had to rearrange some of her schedule for personal reasons, and so she'll be unable to join us today.
Okay, okay, that that happens. I don't know, do I have screen sharing privileges?
I believe that you do. Yes, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, okay. Well, first of all, let me let me start off by introducing our interim Field Director of Operations CJ Muklow. He's joining us from Steamboat, and I'm broadcasting today, if you will, from my my office here in Salida. So I appreciate your time today. Let me start screen sharing here. Okay, hopefully you're seeing the the slide here and not my notes page. Okay, it looks good. Okay, so I did leave copies of this slide deck on your desks when I was in in Leadville last week. I apologize about the the communication errors that that we've had, so I'm glad to be able to present to you today. Colorado State University Extension is a part of the Office of Engagement and Extension through Colorado State University. Extension programs happen through the land grant universities across the United States. And of course, here in Colorado, the Land Grant University is Colorado State University. Some of the other divisions within our Office of Engagement and Extension include the Colorado Water Center, who you may have worked with in the past. They do a lot of research, outreach, engagement and such. Do a lot of work with the Colorado Water Roundtables around the state. And we also have Extended Campus, which includes our online programming and then a lot of professional education. The Osher Lifelong Learning Institute does a lot of work with with credentialing of schoolteachers and continuing education, that type of thing. And then we have some collaboration campuses located along the Front Range as well. An extension, at this point, we are we are broken up into six different geographic regions. Similar, but not exactly the same as the CCI districts that you've that you're familiar with. I'm located here in the center of the state in Chafee County, but as the co-regional director for the central region, my area encompasses Lake County, Chafee Park, Fremont, Teller, and Custer County. So what we kind of call the Mountain Counties Region and have for the past twenty or so years. Early in my career, I had the opportunity to work with with Sue Cummings when she was the one of the State 4-H Program Specialists located at the State 4-H Office on campus. And before she became a State 4- he was the county director in Lake County. And so she and I, particularly after I started here in Chafee County, she and I talked frequently about Lake County and that type of thing. And my understanding of the history is that the the office had to close in nineteen seventy seven. As part of the previously, the climax mine had closed during that time. And and that was a very economically challenging time for Lake County. So how we get an extension office started in Lake County is that there will be a memorandum of understanding that we will that we will both agree to. It outlines the expectations of Lake County and what what the university expects from the appropriate budget, for example, from Lake County Commissioners. What you can expect from Colorado State University, and then a couple of joint expectations. This MOU can be reviewed annually, and our goal is to update these once every three years or so. I put that as a goal because I'm actually working on some MOUs with some other counties, including Chafee County that that is a bit more dated than three years old. So we are trying to get those up to up to speed and then get them on a regular update schedule. So in general, the county provides office space and our general operating funding for the local county extension agent and and that type of thing. So this can include office space, utilities, travel budget for the local extension agent. Any equipment needs they may have, so use of a a photocopier, for example, computer equipment, IT services, this type of thing. The county also provides some funding towards the professional staff for the local extension agent that that would be placed in Lake County. At this point, that there's a formula split. So basically, the county will pay the first fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars is the current charge for a full-time extension employee. It will probably raise some for twenty twenty-two. I was in hopes of actually getting that number by today, but that 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 current formula funding has not been has not been released yet to the field staff here. We also ask the county to provide clerical and administrative support. In most situations, this is a county employee, but it can be hired through Colorado State University if that would be your your preference for that. There is an administrative fee if if we end up doing that. So a lot of our more rural counties prefer to have that as a county employee so that they don't have to pay that administrative fee. We do ask that that someone from the county participate in the selection of the professional staff. In other words, you would serve on the selection committee for that extension agent that that we end up hiring for Lake County. And so this can typically be a a one of the county commissioners can participate in that if they if they so choose. I know that you're working on on hiring a a county manager. In some in some cases, the county manager actually serves on that search committee with the university. We also ask that you help with appointing Extension Advisory Committee volunteers. These are folks that that are appointed by the Board of Commissioners, similar to a lot of the other boards that that you oversee. And these folks help to advise what types of programming happen in Lake County. And so very valuable informer of the types of programming that we do in in our local counties. And if an extension is included in your county emergency management plans, we do ask that that you allow our extension personnel to participate in training and and keep that line of communication open in order for extension to carry out appropriate roles. So for example, here in Chafee County, I serve as the as the ESF eleven lead for our emergency response plan. And so, for example, during the Decker Fire in 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 September of twenty nineteen, we activated the fairgrounds here as a as a large animal emergency shelter. And and I provided leadership for that for that outreach program. And we housed we housed an amazing array of different animals during that fire. And then, as the fire progressed, we ended up housing the entire incident command team here at the fairgrounds. And so it was it was very busy three, four weeks there. Of course, this is a partnership between the university and Lake County, so CSU Extension then would provide access to extension expertise across the state equitably. So in other words, if we if if we mutually decide that we were going to put a an extension agent in Lake County that has expertise in, say, family financial planning or you know, food safety, nutrition, education, that type of thing. That doesn't mean that that's the only type of programming that happens in Lake County. It means that that person is the point person to be able to bring in other types of programs that the advisory committee and that extension professional think are valuable. So for example, right now, I have a vacancy in the 4-H position here in Chafee County. And and I've been into some preliminary talks with our county commissioners here in in Chafee County about potentially filling that position as a full-time 4-H agent that also works part-time in Lake County or does some programming efforts in Lake County. If if Lake County chooses to be a part of the extension program. And kind of under reciprocity reciprocity, if you will. If we do put a Family Consumer Science Extension Agent in in Lake County, I would ask that person to then do some programming here in Chafee County as well. A lot of my expertise is in agriculture, natural resource management, that type of thing. And so there may be some opportunities for me to do some programs in Lake County on small acreage management issues. You know, depending on on what types of other programs might be available in Lake County, we've we've often had extension agents doing work on wildfire mitigation practices in that type of thing. So those types of classes may be maybe appropriate. Of course, CSU Extension provides leadership and administration of programs and staff. So in other words, I, as the regional director, would oversee this this extension agent in in Lake County. Just as I do the other county directors in those in those other counties that that are surrounding us here. We also will go through a recruit, appoint, and supervise that professional staff. And I put parentheses here in support staff if applicable. In other words, if CSU hires that support staff, then then we will, of course, supervise that person. You know, that being said, the administrative support that I have here in the Chafee County Office is actually a Chafee County employee. And yet I oversee her as well as a Colorado State University employee. I do her annual performance appraisals, that type of thing. So so it's a it it can work both ways that way. We also provide qualified state and regional specialists that are able to train and assist county staff in conducting educational programming. So for example, we have a water quality specialist that's based out of Canyon City that works for the Water Center. So maybe able to do some work in Lake County for us. We also have a small acreage specialist that that works with that audience on a regular basis that has done some programs for me here in Chafee County. And I've talked with Kara, and she'd be more than willing to come to Lake County as well. We provide payment of salary and and applicable benefits for the professional staff that are our employees. And of course, we also cover workman's comp and and that type of insurance as well. We also provide support for extramural funding activities to support extension programs. So as as we come across different grant opportunities to help support our different programs, we have an entire support system at the university to help with that. And then, of course, support and emergency management as appropriate and as needed. All of our staff are ICS one hundred and seven hundred trained, just so we can operate within that incident command system operations if the need if the need arises. I did it kind of backwards. I actually participated in a couple or three different emergency responses and then got my credentials after I was done with those. So so we I sometimes am backwards. And the the expectation that we both agree upon is that that we mutually agree to adhere to applicable laws such as Americans with Disabilities Act compliance, Title IX, and Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. So all of our programs, all of our employment opportunities, that type of thing, are available to all without regard to race, color, creed, sex, age, or disability. And of course, this this MOU does remain in full force and in effect from year to year unless it's terminated by either party with sixty days written notice. So that's why some of our MOUs can get a little bit dated, is they they remain in full force. And, you know, frankly, both parties kind of forget to take a look at those every once in a while. So we're trying to we're trying to improve that from our end. So what are some of the 4-H, or I'm sorry, what are some of the extension programs that are available through CSU Extension? So I describe programs that extension does are typically non-credit in in nature. In other words, tonight I happen to be teaching a a bee beekeeping health program to our local bee club that I helped to get established here in Chafee County. We'll actually be opening up a bee hive, and I'll be describing different things that folks need to look at if they're going to become beekeepers and and what to keep in mind there. That doesn't mean that I can give anybody college credit for the that program that I'm that I'm teaching tonight. But I like to think it's more practical education. And so it's a it's it's just one small example of of different programs that we do. So the basic areas that we do programming in include 4-H Youth Development. That's probably our most famous program. The, you know, you think about the 4-H Club and and what the kids do in there. But it it's actually beyond that. It's more than just raising an animal to bring to the county fair to show. Or my kids are are heavily involved in the shooting sports program and in in woodworking. You know, it it goes beyond just them building. My daughter is building a workbench for her 4-H program this year. And but there's other activities that we do. We've done a number of programs in the school to help with different different things. I've taught embryology in the classroom. And so I actually have incubators that I bring into the the classroom, and the kids get to learn about life cycles and and that type of thing. We also do STEM education as well. And of course, this is kind of the buzzword that we have today. But we've we have a pre-COVID, we had a number of kids that were involved in robotics programming type thing. So they actually had Lego programmable robots that they would then program to do different work and and that type of thing. So it's a it's a fun, interactive activity for those kids. And what we're trying to teach these kids as they participate in these different things is life skills. So it's a it's a it's a wonderful program that that is probably why I'm still an extension agent after twenty-four years. We also do cropping systems. This includes regenerative agriculture, alternative cropping systems. Your traditional row cropping systems lie in this different area here. Livestock and range management is is a lot like it sounds, but it also includes ranch analysis and planning, drought, and then soil health as it relates to livestock and native ranges. Natural Resources includes some of our clean energy work that we do. Small acreage management lands in this area and some emergency management as it relates to natural resources as well. Environmental horticulture includes home and commercial horticulture help, sustainable landscapes, and pollinator education. So a lot of the beekeeping work that I that I do, not only locally here, but across the state, lands in this environmental horticulture area. Individual family and community well-being includes some of the family financial sustainability work that we do. We can we can work with families on how to get out of debt faster and help with some of that, you know, saving for homeownership, for example, and some of those types of programs are available that way. We also do healthy aging as well in this different in this particular area. So, for example, here in Chafee County, we have a number of volunteers that that help us out with the Strong People, Strong Bones Program, where they are teaching some nutrition things, but also some guided exercises as they go through their go through their regular meetings and such. And it's an osteoporosis prevention type program. Our food systems, or excuse me, our nutrition, food safety, and health includes food insecurity. For example, one of my colleagues does does outreach for folks that that during the food distribution days that that you're likely familiar with. She will often find out ahead of time what types of foods we're going to be coming in. Will create easy-to-make recipes for that. And then is there on that food distribution day to be able to show folks and have samples of of food ready to go to be able to do that that type of work. And she's had a lot of a lot of good traction with that type of program. We also do diabetes education to help folks that that have that that particular disease navigate that and help to help to stabilize their blood sugars and such. And also something that's that's been important in the last few years has been the cottage foods outreach that we do. And one of the programs that we teach helps folks get their cottage food license and allows them to have that that home-based business in their homes. Food Systems include business management for new farmers. I do the Colorado Building Farmers Program here in Chafee County, which is teaching folks how to write their business plan for their ag enterprise that they have. I guess I have cottage foods down here twice. I apologize about that. But we also do work with market channels, so helping existing food systems businesses develop their market channels and and expand their market channels, that type of thing. And then finally, we do community development work, which is where a lot of our emergency management work is in. I actually teach classes on for horse owners on how to prepare themselves for an eventual evacuation with their horses and what types of things they need to make sure that they are thinking through and and what they need to have in their horse trailer and frankly, on their horse themselves when they surrender that animal into a into a shelter area. But there's also community health work that happens there, and then our diversity, equity, and inclusion work lands under that umbrella of community development. So taking a look at this list, I've been I've been involved with a community needs assessment. I think I've I at least talked with with Commissioner Marcela and Commissioner Fieldler as a component of this. And and so I'm kind of settling in on on some different programming areas. But again, as we progress through this community needs assessment and then advisory committee input will help to determine what types of programs might be might best suit the needs of Lake County. The areas that I'm thinking about include the 4-H Youth Development Program in partnership with Chafee County 4-H. I've I've begun introducing the idea, at least to the Chafee County Fair Board, about what would you think about having a few more kids from Lake County coming and participating in the Chafee County Fair in the next coming years? And they're they're very open to that. And so it isn't the type of thing where we need to start an extension program and then immediately jump into hosting a county fair and and all of that. I think we can do this in micro micro steps, unless, of course, you know, the the county and its citizens want to move in that direction of of having a county fair in Lake County. I don't remember seeing a whole lot of row crops in Lake County in my visits. So cropping systems doesn't make a lot of sense. Natural Resources, small acreage, perhaps some of the emergency management stuff that I talked about, you know, with teaching folks about how to create defensible spaces around their homes. Weatherization and energy work might also be valuable in that area. But a lot of the a lot of the stuff that I've been seeing with the needs assessment lands in the area of that family financial stability and healthy aging, and then the food, cottage foods, diabetes education, some of those types of programs. And, you know, I one of the one of the great things about being an extension agent in away from campus is that, you know, we are ingrained in our communities. I've lived here in Chafee County since nineteen ninety-nine, so I've I've been here for a number of years. I know who the right people are to talk to when I'm trying to get input into programs. And, you know, I know some of the right folks to try to partner with to do different programs. Moving into Lake County, I don't have as much of that. And it's it's been with a little bit of trepidation, trying to figure out what exactly are the programming needs that Lake County has. So these are Kurt Jones's best guesses that are here. But, you know, a lot of this needs to be fleshed out by visiting with your public health director, for example. Your Director of Health and Human Services, some of those key folks there. I have been in touch with the C4 group. And so I wanted to make sure that I also don't want to move into a county and then step on toes. And so one of the things that, and and I apologize, I don't have her name right here in front of me. But one of the things we've been talking about is is, you know, where are those areas that that they are doing programming in that we should maybe back off on and then vice versa, there's they would love to have the ability to pass along some of those gardening questions to extension as opposed to them being saddled with them. So so anyway, that's kind of the presentation that I've got. This is my contact information there. Again, I gave you these slides when I when I was there before. So let me stop sharing and and hopefully hopefully this, you know, helps to answer some questions or maybe formulate some questions for you. And I forgot to introduce Anita Harvey. I think you probably know her. She is serving as our as our 4-H Club Leader for the Broken Arrows 4-H Club that has been a part of Chafee County now since nineteen ninety-nine. So so I appreciate Anita being here and 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 maybe she can, I don't know, she might she might poke you a little bit. I'm not sure, but we'll we'll ask her to to behave.
Go ahead, Jeff. I'll let you start. I'll let you start.
Yeah, if you, first of all, thanks for the for the presentation's great and great to hear that you're talking with some other, you know, community organizations and, you know, to see where the gaps are, and like you said, not step on toes and, you know, we're small enough that duplicating efforts is
It's frustrating no matter the size of the of the community, for sure.
One one sort of admin question, you mentioned that the extension agent would or one of the county responsibilities would be providing some administrative assistance support. I was wondering if you had just like a rough sense of what's typical in terms of like percent of an FTE that might be needed? You know, just ballpark, like what's typical there?
Kind of what I'm what I'm thinking about right now. I I don't think it's going to be as robust a program right off the bat that it needs a full-time FTE. I'm actually thinking around a halftime FTE. Frankly, when I was, when I was driving back after. After. Visiting Leadville last Monday. I was thinking, you know, this might be a wonderful job for that. That, that person that has school age children that wants to have a part time job during the day. While they're in school and, and that type of thing, so. You know, and we have, for example, Teller County has a shared. Halftime. Extension and halftime. Social services administrative assistant, so that person actually.
Summit County has a shared admin too, is how they do it.
Yeah, no, that, that's good knowing where we have some other sort of moving pieces with, you know, we're hiring a new county manager for the first time and. Figuring out what administrative support that person might need in their office. So I think there. That, yeah, that, that ballpark's good for us to. Throw into the mix. Of questions. Also curious how, how, how does that, you mentioned there's a sort of community advisory committee and. Maybe you could talk about sort of how that's set up and what role it has and then sort of in general, like how. How these priority areas of the extension agent in Lake County and how do those get set up and reviewed? You know, throughout your.
Okay, let me start with the advisor committee question first. It's. Ideally, well. Let me, let me describe how Chaffey Counties is and. And some of the, some of the challenges that I've had. The idea behind it is. That we have a certain represent, certain number of representatives that, that helped me with. Some of the traditional agriculture needs for the community. And we have some that serve as the youth development. Needs of the community and then family consumer science. Side of it and it's roughly been three ag, three youth development and three family consumer science. It's maybe been fifteen years since I've had a full complement of those nine people. So. Yeah, the idea was that they would serve for three year terms and so only a third of the. Group would turn over every year and so there's still some institutional knowledge and that type of thing. The problem has been, what's the right balance between meeting too often and not being enough? And I've pretty well settled in on if we can meet once a quarter. That works pretty well. Less, less than that, it tends to be more of a presentation from the extension staff to the advisory committee. As to what are the great things that we're doing? And then they, you know, clap their hands and say, yeah, you're doing great work and it, it isn't that rich. Back and forth. Meeting once a month. Maybe we get too much into the weeds as opposed to thinking high level stuff, so. And, and again, these are, these are. They have historically been. Appointed by the Board of Commissioners and so they serve at, at the, at the behest of the county commissioners. And so that I think most of, most, most of those programs across the state. That are successful have that, that particular component, so.
All right, cool.
And then I, I also have a couple of ex officios on mine. One is our county commissioner that typically would oversee our. Department and the other ex officio is the president of our youth council. And so this is a young person, you know, sixteen, eighteen years old. That try to give their, their voice into the, into the program, so.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, and I think I'm. Charles up talking in a second and let other people ask questions to you. I think, you know, there, there's some interesting groups that might be. I'm thinking like the, the Conservation District just had its first in person meeting. You know, coming out of COVID times and I think there's a, you know, some kind of renewed energy in that group with a new district manager and they, they would express an interest in like. Working with the schools and working with sort of next generation. Books, so I think that, you know, there, there's some energy. There, you mentioned the C four farm, you know, then the school itself and then get outdoors Leadville have like a pretty. I know at times they've done visits to some of the local ranches and I think there's, I think there's a there, there that might. Help the four H be successful too, if there's, you know, some more programming. At the same group of kids could, could feed into or, or get more kids from the schools. Aware that there's agriculture in the county. Or the world. You know, and. And, and then be interested in four H, so yeah. Cool. Well, I'm, I'll, I'll, I'll stop for a second.
I just wanted to put in Jeff that I've already actually talked with Blanca Rodriguez. About joining in with the after school program and that kind of stuff. And she's very on board with that.
Yeah, you're great. And that's great. And then I know. The Conservation District have been like a little frustrated. They felt like they kind of given, wow. Then managed to keep a partnership going with the school district. So maybe sitting down at some point with Becca Katz, who I think. Is like school district and does their outdoor ed stuff and then also maybe we've got towards Leadville and just, yeah, just see what, yeah. What makes sense.
Yep, just so you know, extension has relationship with conservation districts and actually by law, we're ex official members of every district board. So we, we do in other counties have a relationship and we want to maintain it as you suggested.
And from a, from an emergency response standpoint. We actually do have some federal regulations as to if there's an agriculture disaster in Lake County. We work with Farm Service Agency and RCS in trying to do. It's, it's what's, it's what's internally called a flash report as to what, what the initial damage. From an agriculture standpoint is to USDA and, and I'm often helping navigate when, when we have. Most years, most years we end up with a drought disaster declaration that happens. One year, one year or a few years ago, we got our drought disaster declaration. And about three weeks later, we were applying for flood disaster mitigation. Same summer, so I'm sure, I'm sure USDA was scratching their heads on that, but. We do have some, we do have some obligations along those lines and. And frankly, if, if something were to happen in Lake County, I don't know what would be the right answer right now because we don't have that. That county extension agent presence there. And in frankly, in reviewing the emergency operations plan for Lake County. I was specifically looking at. Who is ESF eleven lead right now and it's not, it's not defined in your plan. There, from, from my understanding, I'm, I'm not seeing who is the lead there. So that ends up falling on whoever the incident commander is and so in the, in. You know, when, when the excrement hits the rotating device, if you will. Then that, that incident commander often has other things on their plate other than what is the ag response going to be? And so. So that may be an appropriate role for an extension presence in Lake County.
Yeah, and I really liked your comment in passing about like making sure there's a plan about how to evacuate animals and temporarily house them because I'm sure, I mean. You know, we all kind of have our. People who have landed animals kind of, we roughly have our contact information, but you know, in an emergency that, that could easily break down.
Well, and the other thing that has tended to happen is as soon as an emergency happens. Everybody with a truck and trailer wants to go in and help rescue animals. And including folks from outside the area that, that you may not want hauling your animals off because you may never see them again. So it's a, it's a tricky situation to navigate during, during the heat of the moment.
Kayla, I don't know if you had any questions. I'll, I'll stop talking for a second.
No, no worries. Yeah, thanks for, for bringing up. I had my notes, the, the Conservation District as well. So I don't know if there would be any room for, for some collaboration there or if you've worked with the Conservation District in, in Chaffey County at all, Kurt.
Yeah, we're actually planning a, a small acreage. Program for October. Right now I'm, I'm going to meet with our Conservation District. July twelfth.
Okay, yeah, I think it would be really great if we could have some partnership with them because they had, had also, as Jeff. I had reiterated in our, our meeting with them last week. The desire to have some. Some help with getting some of their programs back up and running, so that would be really great. The only other question that I have right now is, is the formula split, our portion of that is fourteen thousand seven hundred. Would the other piece of that, that salary formula split come from CSU or would that come from Chaffey County or what? What does that look like for that position?
One of the, one of the early questions that I had for our director, the Vice President for the Office of Engagement was. You know. What can I offer for this, for this program and CJ, please correct me if I'm speaking out of line here, but. There, the intention is to put a full formula agent in Lake County, so. The way I describe it to, to the county commissioners here in, in Chaffey County is that you pay the first fourteen thousand seven hundred of this person's. Salary and benefits and the university covers the rest of it and so. So it's. One of the, one of the studies that we've done in, in recent past is gone through and. Tried to help calculate for each county, what is the return on investment for the county dollars that you're leveraging into. Into the program, what is your return that you're getting back and it's one of the, one of the. One of the comments that we hear back frequently is that commissioners are very happy with the return on investment. You know, for. I, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I, I don't want to underplay how much money. I will be asking for in a, in a budget request because you know halftime, halftime program is or administrative assistant. You know, office space, whether that's in a county building or if the county doesn't have adequate space for that. For that person. You know, I did look at where C four is, is currently renting space in the federal building. Just behind the courthouse there. When I was in town last week, so. My, I, it's my understanding that those, those spaces rent for around three or four hundred a month, something like that, so. My, my preference would be if we can be in county owned property and we're not spending taxpayer dollars on, on rent. Of another facility, but, and that's, that's typically a much easier sell.
Okay, so, so we would essentially then be creating like another. Complete county department around this, the CSU extension program then.
Yeah, yeah, I, I serve as department head for Chaffey County. Actually the longest serving department head in Chaffey County at this point. Yeah, I have outlived everybody else, so. But. You know, you know, Jeff and I somewhat in passing talked a little bit about, well, maybe this is a line item in the commissioner's budget, but. Maybe it makes more sense to actually have this as a separate budget in. In its own line item in the, in the appropriate budget. It's a little easier for some of our financial reporting that we do on an annual basis. CSU extension actually receives funding from. College State University, USDA, NIFA and the National Institute for Food and Agriculture and. And of course, local counties like Lake County and so. Were able to. Because of the, the unique nature of our funding, we're able to leverage some of those federal funds. Through some of the, the monies that the counties put into the program, so.
Okay, so then. Would you be the full time person or would we advertise for the full time? We would just advertise for the full time person that would be.
Yes.
Lake County specific and then CSU would also give us, I, I'm assuming that the MASH from CSU is going to be the fourteen thousand seven hundred. As well as in a fifty fifty split or is it?
I'm, I'm sure it'll be, it'll be higher than that. We start, we start our extension agents with a master's degree. If you have a master's degree and no experience, you would start a salary of around forty five thousand dollars. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's not a fifty fifty split.
Okay, so, so CSU would have more. More skin in the game essentially than just the fourteen thousand that we would, we would contribute to the salary, but then we would contribute with, with the space and. The IT.
Exactly, and, and travel, travel support, so. You know, if, if. If this person needs to go to a, an out of town meeting, so for example, we have our extension forum coming up here in November. We bring all of our extension folks in from across the state. The Lake County Director would then be. Be charging that against Lake County funds.
Okay, so. So then would we have the ability to write into the MOU? Like that work with the Conservation District to, to help with some of that, that, that stuff that we, we might need on the county side. But we don't have the capacity to, to carry forward, so I'm thinking Jeff. Like assistance with some of those, those programming needs from the Conservation District and how they might complement some of the programming needs of the CSU extension. Would we have the ability to direct some of that work then with this MOU, Kurt?
You could do with the MOU, but you could also do it in a job description specifically stating work with, I guess, the upper arc, I don't know. The upper Conservation District, you know, put that right in the job description, so those would, you would help formulate that. It is a specific. Relationships to organizations that we're not, not, that are not four H, we don't usually write those in MOUs, we could. But we probably put it, rather put in the job description so they know. This is part of your job to work with that district.
Okay, no, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't something where we would be restrictive from asking this individual. Or this position essentially to assist with some of those conservation needs of the county and the Conservation District because I think. There's a lot of, a lot of programming. And, and information available from our local Conservation District, we just don't have the capacity to carry that work forward and it sounds like this might be a really great. Complementary program to some of that, so that's perfect and I, outside of that really. On my notes, I don't seem to have any other really logistical questions at this time. Jeff, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you to see if you have anything else.
No, I think, I think. That was great. I mean, I could probably, you know. I think when we get further down the road, you know, yeah, thinking about some of the ways to frame the job description or set up the advisory committee so that we kind of steer things. The right direction and make the right connections, but for now, I think I have, have what we need.
You would like to see other small counties like say Jackson County. Or Grand County, you know, descriptions or single agent counties, we, I could get you those job descriptions if you'd like to look at them, what they are. So you had an idea, so we have. So you could see what other we wrote for other people. I'm happy to do that if it would help you.
If you could pass those along, I think that'd be great.
I'll just get him to, to Kurt, let him pour to you. I don't know if I have all your emails, but I'll do that.
If I, and I know, I know you're not, you're not in a work session, you're not allowed to make decisions. But if I can have some little bit of a direction. What I'm hearing is that you would prefer to have this administrative assistant be a Lake County employee. But maybe not full time. And the reason that I ask is that this is, this is an area in that MOU that I can, I can take the MOU in, in that direction. As a Lake County employee versus a, a College State University employee. The, the professional staff, the, the extension agent or extension director has to be a. has to be a, um, Colorado State University employee, but that administrative assistant can be either CSU or Lake County.
I'm gonna just, I have to jump off on my apologies. I have another Zoom, but I just wanna say that, you know, we're in the education business, informal education, and we work, we have relationship with every county except three, uh, U, Pittkin, and San Juan. And we would like to have it, it's our goal, but, and I think we provide a service that can complement those services, and we're in the education business, informal education, so we would like to come back and be a partner again with you, and we think we could provide a service that would have value to citizens. So that's what I wanted to say before I had to get off. I'm happy to write you with any, I'll give you those job descriptions, I'll get those to Kurt today and, and answer any other questions, but I apologize. I've, I gotta leave here to get on another one, so.
I think if you, thank you CJ for, for coming today, and, and thank you for passing on those job descriptions. I really, really appreciate it and really appreciate, um, being part of the conversation with you guys and look forward to, to working on developing a, a partnership with y'all.
We'll just wait to hear from you and I'll wait to hear from Kurt, but we'll all send those to you today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you CJ.
Yep.
Kurt, I think if you, I think it would be most beneficial for us to start with, um, that employee being a county employee, because if it's a part-time position, we may be able to blend it, or, or something of the sort with, with another, um, administrative function. So it would probably be most beneficial if we started that MOU process with that employee being a county employee rather than a CSU employee, so that would give us a little bit more flexibility to be more creative with, um, with advertising, um, and recruitment of that position, uh, instead of as like a part-time person, as a full-time person potentially. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, yeah, that, that makes sense. And sorry, I did have one other question of this, um, up my head, and, and sorry Kurt, if we talked about this before, and I don't have my notes from that conversation in front of me. Is there, is there a timeframe that's important from the CSU side to get a decision going? And then I'll, you know, like, you know, yeah, for, and, and when we need to get our acts together, you know, or could this wait to the twenty-twenty-two budget, or, you know, what, what's the?
Um, so it's kinda, it's kinda up to your, um, your, I mean, we haven't had an extension office in Lake County since, for forty-five years, so, you know, another couple of months doesn't, doesn't, uh, make a difference here. From a programmatic standpoint, um, it would be really cool if we could start an extension office in, say, October or November. But, um, I understand that I'm asking mid-budget cycle. So, um, you and I had talked a little bit early on about, uh, the potential of, um, me coming into your normal budget preparation cycle, um, I'm assuming it starts in July. There, you notice the question mark at the end of that.
That's a good question.
And so, I guess, in the back of my mind, I've always been thinking, let's start this extension office January of twenty-two, um, because that would make the most sense for, um, your budgeting, um, your, your budgeting needs and, and that type of thing. It gives us time to, um, come to an understanding of that MOU, um, make sure that, uh, that, um, your, um, your legal department has time to review it and, and, uh, and make sure that, that this is, um, you know, this, you're getting into the program what you think you're getting into. And, um, and frankly gives me a little bit of time to, um, get that MOU finished up and, and, uh, that type of thing. So, um, programmatically, it'd be great if we can do it October first. Realistically, January first, um, looks a lot more realistic. You know, if we have the MOU in place, um, we can kind of set up the, uh, um, the search for this fall uh, with the idea that this person starts in January. And so that's kinda, that's, that's kinda the timeframe that I'm, I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kurt, I, I kinda was, uh, thinking along the same lines of if this was something that we, we had chosen to enter into, it would be really great if we could utilize the time in the fall to potentially recruit someone to start in January, and pick that ball rolling up, you know, right away at the first of the year. So, um, okay, so what, what the next steps would be then for you to send us an MOU to review, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I, I have it mostly finished. I, I am, I'm, I'm, I'm also making sure that, uh, you know, our 4H agent position here in Chaffey County is actually half-formula and half-fully funded by our county. And so I'm trying to make sure that I don't step on any toes here at home, um, with, uh, this, this new, um, 4H position, doing some work in Lake County. I don't, I don't anticipate them having any issues with that. I've also asked our fair committee about, um, you know, hey, if we, if we enter into this partnership with Lake County and they, and they come in to, um, participate in our county fair, you know, what are the, what are the, um, what are the concerns that you see? You know, for example, uh, if, um, if this looks like it's going to, um, move forward and, and be a, be a good thing, I could easily see Anita, um, having forty, fifty kids in her 4H club. Uh, there's the reaction I was hoping for. No, I, uh, what Anita and I have talked about it a little bit is, uh, um, we would really like to recruit some more 4H leaders in Lake County and build it that direction rather than, um, overwhelming Anita with, uh, fifty, sixty kids in, in one club. So, that's the, uh, that's the approach that I'm taking. But, you know, I'm, I'm anticipating that county fair twenty-two, we might have, say, thirty kids in, uh, in the 4H program, um, from Lake County. Maybe that's optimistic, I don't know, um, but, uh, um, you know, I, um, I actually just took our, uh, our, uh, 4H agent who's leaving, um, Chaffey County here out to lunch today. So, um, she starts her new, uh, her new position in, uh, in Montavista on Thursday this week. So, um, and Anita's getting sad now, cause, uh, uh, we're losing a good 4H agent. So I'm hoping our next one is, uh, just as gregarious as, uh, as Morgan has been, so. Anyway, um, so, uh, so far, um, the leadership here in Chaffey County is, is fine with, uh, with, um, you know, some, some cross-county programming with the understanding that, that there is some reciprocity there. And, um, I haven't shared it yet, but one of the things that's happening at the university is that, uh, extension agents in every state in the West except for Colorado are considered faculty, um, in their respective universities. And so, um, we are in the process of being moved into that faculty role in, uh, in, at Colorado State University. And one of the concerns that we have moving forward is, um, the potential that, uh, uh, as, as those, as those folks become faculty, if they, if they, in, um, in those position descriptions that you see that are coming through, there may be some, um, you know, well, you get to do 4H and family consumer science, and by the way, you get to do this as well. That may be problematic for our professionals as they move forward and try to, um, get promotions in place. Right now, the way that the system is set up, in order for someone to get a promotion, if you will, is they have to pick up their family and move to another county. And so, what we're trying to do is retain, uh, extension professionals a bit longer and allow them to be promoted in place. And, um, what, what will be nice about that is that, you know, um, you know, someone like myself who's been in a, in the position for, um, you know, twenty years, twenty-plus years, as I go through those promotions, that doesn't cost the county any more money than, uh, than what, um, than what, uh, you're already paying into the program. And so it's, uh, it's an opportunity for us to be, um, rewarded for, um, longevity in a county, um, as opposed to being, um, you know, encouraged to move from county to county to county and, and get those promotions that way, so.
Okay.
So, I will start working on that MOU. I do have, uh, um, some other obligations today and tomorrow, but hopefully I can, I can get it, um, pulled together by the end of the week here, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, that sounds good. No screaming rush. We'll just get it in the mix as we start talking budget and, yeah, so.
Okay.
Really appreciate the time, and also Anita, thanks for keeping the 4H club going and being a part of this effort to revitalize this as well.
Yeah, thank you guys so much, and thank you so much for your time, um, today, and definitely apologize for the miscommunication and, and planning from our last meeting, but I really feel like today was really valuable, um, for us to be around together and talk through this program, so thank you so much.
You bet, you bet. And you have my contact information. If other questions come up after this, feel free to reach out to me, so. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Okay, so I think the next thing on our list is, um, our handbook. Chris, do you have the ability to share your screen, or would you like me to share, share the screen? I don't know if I have the...
Uh, well, I can do, yeah, I can do it, um, uh, I believe, or, um, one question I had was which one y'all wanted to work from the markup with the comments and stuff in it, or the clean one?
The one, the one you have with the comments in it.
Okay. Let me see here, if I can get that, um...
I'm gonna be back in two minutes.
Yeah, that's good. Take a break. Oh, that's good. So Kayla, you and I, um, I missed you. I thought we had a call at noon on the, um, Baker wedding thing. Did I miss that, mess that up somehow?
No, sorry, I had, um, an emergency call with Colleen this afternoon, so I wasn't, so I'll connect with you after this.
Okay, I just didn't know if you wanted, if there was a lot we need to talk about, or if it was gonna be quick. Do it while he was on his potty break. So.
Yeah, we can connect right after.
Let me, let me practice on this screen share thing and see, um, if that's gonna work.
Okay, I can see it.
Okay, let me, um, please, you could see it, but I'm not sure I can. I don't do a lot of screen sharing, so I guess I can, can you see my cursor moving in it and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, I just don't do enough of this type of stuff to figure out how to, to work it.
If you want me to, I can share my screen if you'll email it to me.
Well, I, I've got, it's all right, cause I was just gonna, as we go through it, cause if we're just gonna be talking, I'll need to be looking at this anyway, and I can just try to make changes. And I guess as we go, I can also, like, I'll make this July, since it will be July now. I can make changes as we scroll through.
Okay, that sounds good.
You okay?
Yeah, I just, uh, they must've cut the grass just a couple days ago and, um, or yesterday morning, and it just makes my eyes water sometimes with all the
Yep.
stuff floating around.
Uh, it's begun, I'm putting another cough drop in. I took the pups for a quick walk before the meeting. And it's just a little bit of wind and the pine pollen still blowing around my nose, and my head's all stopped up again too, so. And all the crud, the worst part is all the crud come draining down my throat. Is that this, yeah, chronic sore throat type of thing, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, and I didn't get any, um, I didn't get any comments from Sarah, so.
Okay, sounds good. Um, she did say that since she was unable to make it today, that she'll listen to this recording, um, once we finish, so I'll make sure that a meet sends it to her so that she can, she can listen and, and go through the, any changes that we have.
Okay.
So, cool. Hi. All right, Chris, I think we're ready when you are. I'm just gonna put my water in my cup real quick, so that's why my video is stopping, but we're ready when you are.
It will, and I just wanted to, I was, I didn't know, since this is such a god-awful long document, if there were any, any, if any areas y'all wanted to focus on, if you've had a chance to review. I was just gonna kinda scroll through. Jeff, what were you, I know we previously talked about, um, uh, that you were going to, um, share this with Hannah, and I didn't know if that had been done yet, or, uh, if you're just waiting until after she arrives on Thursday.
I, 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 I did, and sorry for, she had one thing, let me, I, I, I think it was, there was something about like notification before taking leave, and I can't remember if it was maternity leave or FMLA, that she recommended, or thought that i- in some cases she had seen there being like, uh, not just an open-ended, please notify us, but like notify us X number of days before, you know, not like midnight before.
Right.
Let me pull up her email and see what that was. And then other than that, she, I mean, you know, it's a long document, she didn't, I don't think she went through it word for word. Um, but yeah, she starts Thursday and on her sort of like thirty-day list of things to tackle is, you know, help with the rollout and as, as new, you know, things emerge, and try to treat this as a living document, not something we don't touch for another ten years.
Exactly, exactly. And so one of the things I, you know, as you'll see with the markup, I, there were a lot of, of textual changes. I don't wanna essentially read this to y'all, cause you, you can read, so, and most of these type of changes were more about making it so it reads well. Cause it, when I first started reading the old version of it, there were a lot of things that didn't make sense or that were ambiguous or contradictory. So I tried to go through and, and make it so that it was easier to read and, uh, like, more consistent. There were some provisions that were in certain sections that probably should've been somewhere else and that type of thing. So I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take y'all's whole afternoon going through this. So my thought, I'm gonna scroll kinda through, cause it, most of the stuff, like, the language changes, and especially with the at-will employment and all of that, is just to make sure that it's a defensible position if an issue arises.
No, I really, I really felt like the changes in there were, um, were appropriate because I liked the, the, the tone of the language, um, and the changes there. So I really don't have anything in this first top part.
Um, so I'm just gonna scroll, and if I scroll past somewhere that you wanna talk about, you know, and I'll go back up. And then what I thought is definitely focus on some of the, uh, the comments and stuff. And so Catherine had put in a comment before about defining employees and stuff. And so what, what was left, I believe, is, is the way it has been. And so I didn't know if there were any changes that y'all wanted for this. I didn't make any changes, since she had made the comment, um, as to, you know, having these multiple categories of full-time, three-quarter time, that type of thing, can be confusing, uh, to some folks. And I guess the, the question is, you know, the, what was the purpose of this? And I, y'all might not even know, since you, you were around when, when it was set up, but what was the purpose of having these two different categories?
Oh, I think the purpose of having the regular three-quarter time employee is because our retirement plan and the Affordable Care Act, um, talks about those hourly thresholds for when somebody is considered full-time employment and eligible for those benefits. And so what we had seen previously was a little bit of inequity between a regular full-time employee that's hired at forty hours per week and someone that's hired at thirty hours per week getting the same benefits but not working, um, you know, the same hours. And so I think what we wanted to alleviate was, um, you know, kind of being able to classify those individuals appropriately to say you're eligible for these benefits, but not these benefits. So like if you work forty hours per week, then you're eligible for vacation and sick and personal time. But if you work as a three-quarter time employee, perhaps you're not eligible for vacation time, but only personal time and sick time, if that makes sense.
It does, it just makes it kind of complicated. And I guess one of the questions I would have, what happens with them, basically start out perhaps as a three-quarter time employee, and then they transition to a position that's a regular forty-hour employee? perhaps as a three-quarter time employee, and then they transition to a position that's a regular forty-hour employee? What happens in terms of their benefits and computations and accruals and that kind of stuff? Because it's, I presume everything carries over, and then they would just be stepped up to the next level once they transition into a new position? And then vice versa, if somebody is regular forty and they drop into a different one?
Yeah, and, and so previously, we haven't had consistency, like we haven't had any consistency with like, you know, I'm gonna hire this person at thirty hours per week, and then we get the payroll change form, and it's like full-time employee at thirty hours per week. But then there's always that question of like, well, did you offer them benefits in terms of health insurance and retirement? Or did you budget for that? Or did you offer them, you know, X amount of vacation hours and personal hours and sick hours, or did you not offer them that? Because technically, they're a full-time employee, so how do we account for those benefits? And so right now, it's really too much gray area where it's case by case to where I think this will help add some definition to that if we can figure out how to, how to cap that or what is appropriate to cap that or not cap that, or do we just eliminate anybody working thirty to thirty-nine hours?
Well, it's like Catherine put in the comment, you know, had just, if you had just one regular full-time thing, you can prorate based on the number of hours worked. And so, you know, perhaps you define the regular, you know, full-time as employees, you know, regularly scheduled to work at least the thirty hours a week or something. And then, you know, or say thirty to forty hours per week, and then have a statement in there that the, you know, certain benefits may be prorated based on the number of hours a full-time employee is regularly scheduled to work.
So in that instance, like if you
That's a thought.
If you were typically thirty hours per week, then we would take your your hourly accrual, if you will, and then that's what you would get for your vacation time based on your hours worked.
Right.
Okay. I think that makes sense, as long as we can have that documented. So as long as we can put that somewhere here that says, you know, regular full-time employees are employees regularly scheduled to work year-round between thirty and forty hours per week. They are eligible for health insurance and retirement benefits, and also eligible for paid time off. And paid time off will be prorated based on hours worked per week.
Okay. Okay, bear with me, I'm just scribbling some notes real quick to make sure I capture that.
No, that's fine.
Okay, all right. So, but in this section here with the classifications, perhaps we just put a, a provision in there that essentially says that, you know, benefits may be prorated based on the number of hours regularly scheduled to work.
Okay.
We can do, do have more detail.
Okay, and then that, that would eliminate the three-quarter time regular employee. Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Jeff, any thoughts on that? Besides how painful this is gonna be?
I thought was, I'm glad I'm not an HR professional. I know we have an HR director to answer all these questions. I, I mean, I, sorry, I might have spaced out on some of the details I have to admit, but I mean, I think, like in my experience in, you know, with places I've worked, there's always been that kind of cutoff at three-quarters. And I have transitioned between full-time and three-quarters at least once or twice. And yeah, you, I mean, you, you know, you keep things you've accrued, and you just, on that date, you start under your new rules, you know, with additional benefits or accruing at a different rate or whatever it is. I don't, I mean, you gotta specify it, but it's not impossible to manage, and it's not that many people who switch in and out.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's what's gonna be one of my questions too. How many, do we have any idea of the breakdown of the folks that are regular full-time and regular three-quarter? How many, how many employees are gonna be, you know, are already here?
I would say right now at this point, less than five. I, I think less than five. And I think I can recall at least specifically two circumstances where this had happened with our previous HR director, and in their employment offer letter to them, she negotiated and specified the benefits to them of, like, you're eligible for this much vacation, eligible for this much personal time as part of the negotiation process with them, with their hours at three-quarters time. So we were able to account for that and track for that. I just think sometimes when that hasn't been specified, or when we haven't had an HR director in place for a while, then some of that has a tendency to get lost in the shuffle, and I just, as long as we're consistent in it, I think that's fine.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll put some together, and obviously you're gonna have, excuse me, another opportunity to review it, so we can can tweak it if, if something needs to be changed. Let's see. I'm just scrolling. Again, if I go past something that you wanted to talk about, and you know, one of the things I talked about earlier, there's, there's some, and I really like to, to try to, to pare this down a little bit, to reduce or eliminate some of the duplication. So, the internet's unstable. Let's see here. Scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. Because this is, I mean, it, it, Jeff, I, I understand your pain just thinking about this, because it was incredibly painful to slog my way through this document the way it was. And so it's, and it, it needs to be clear and can concise enough that you can, it, it's user-friendly, you know? Okay, what, oh, these are Hannah's. Okay, thanks, Jeff. Feedback. Okay, good idea about linking the FMLA documents so that it doesn't just fall on HR you know, in terms of the request form and stuff. Yeah, for pregnancy, you should be able to say within thirty days, but okay, thanks, thanks for that, Jeff, the comments, I can work that in. Let's see here, these comments. Yeah, so Kayla, were there other questions you had on this in terms of the conditions for for physicals? I, I agree with Catherine, I don't, I wouldn't get too specific, because that eliminates your flexibility if something comes up and you would like to have one done, so.
Yeah, I just, I think, you know, I mean, I, like, years ago, I mean, we're talking like eight, nine years ago, we used to require everyone to have a physical upon their hire, and I just don't know that that's good practice. And so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we, we weren't sending somebody in, in administrative job to like a CDL physical, because that's the standard, you know what I mean? And so just wanted to make sure, you know, again, that, that there was consistency, but I think that that will be alleviated as well with, with an HR manager where she'll be able to say, hey, I believe that this position needs to have a physical prior to this person taking the job, or whatever that may be, or we can write that into the job description is what I'm assuming would be the most appropriate thing to do.
Yeah, you, you can definitely do that. One of the things, though, is that the law has changed some in regards to an employer's ability to request these type of background checks and, and physicals and stuff like that, to where the standard is, is stated here. It has to be job-related and consistent with business necessity. And so it's, it, it's no longer a situation where everybody you hire has, can be subjected to a background check or to certain other investigations. And the reason for that is the disparate impact that, that was experienced by people of color because of there's such a higher incident rate of them being arrested for certain things and pleading guilty for certain things that may not be directly applicable to their, their job performance. So it's, it's a little tighter of a requirement now than it used to be, so. I, I wouldn't recommend do much more than what's here for, for that. Yeah, and so the, the, the next comment from Catherine, but, you know, and this is something that we bumped into, as y'all both know a lot with certain elected officials and such, making hiring decisions not, not being consistent. And, you know, as we discussed, inconsistency i- is your biggest pitfall, treating people different, because invariably, if something happens or somebody's not happy, there's gonna be somebody who falls into a protected class that gives them a basis to allege some sort of discrimination claim and that type of thing. And also to put folks on notice, if you don't follow the, the mandated process and procedure and such, then you could be be in the embarrassing situation of having to rescind an offer of employment. So any comments, questions, concerns about that? No, okay.
Actually, I do have
Okay.
A question or a comment there. We have typically had some struggles with creating collective buy-in from other elected officials regarding a lot of the, the consistency with, with policies and practices being executed. And so how do we, how do we do that without? You know, I don't want to be in a position where I'm micromanaging another elected official's department, because that, you know, that they're elected to operate and run that department, and that's, that's great. But I guess it's just the approach of how do we create the value add and the buy-in from other elected officials to understand how important this is to the overall and overarching success of the organization. You know, with, with the understanding that, you know, if you are not doing these properly, and then we have a suit come to us because of discriminatory hiring practices, the B O C C is named in that suit, regardless of the elected official who does the hiring or the discriminant, discriminatory action, the B O C C is named. So how do we create that buy-in? Is, I, I guess that would be something to just think of in terms of that comment a little bit, Chris?
Well, and I think that also dovetails into, as you follow on, in terms of the next comment that I put in about the B O C C statutory authority to impact budget for violation and stuff. I, I highly recommend, and I don't know how much feedback we'll get from it, that you give the other elected officials the opportunity to review the final draft of the handbook before it's adopted, and tell them, you know, give them a certain period of time and say, we must hear from you before such and such date as to any policies or procedures that your office has implemented or follows that are inconsistent with what's in here. So you have the opportunity, have that conversation of, what are you doing different that's not consistent with this, so that we can either help educate them as to why they need to adopt the counties overall, or we can determine whether that's within their statutory authority and put a comment in that the handbook provision essentially says, employees of such and such department or employees of elected officials may be subject to other policies and procedures, you know, something to that effect. But I, I agree with you. I don't wanna open the door for them to say, okay, I can essentially write my own handbook, you know?
Yeah, I, I definitely don't want that to be the case. I do know, though, you know, with the sheriff's office, that there is that that is guided by a different set of policies and procedures and that, you know, that there's some, some, yeah. And so I just am wondering if there's also an opportunity to put that disclaimer here that, you know, sheriff's office employees may be subject to separate policy, employment policies. You know, I mean, she
Let me see if there's a good place to put, just in general, to pick and choose which ones that they're able to do that with.
Okay, okay. I just know that there's some, and it may be that we do something at the beginning of this handbook, kind of like we had in the old one. Just that disclaimer, because I know, you know, the sheriff's office hat can have a much tighter, you know, social media policy than we may be able to, because it may jeopardize an investigation or whatever, you know what I mean? So they, they may have tighter policies than we might, and I just wanna make sure that we have that disclaimer in there too.
And so what, maybe one way to approach that too, especially with the sheriff's office, would be to have some sort of, you know, if they could identify where their policies are different and be able to say, you know, the county handbook is adopted and will be followed except in the following things, you know, and it, but it needs to be things that are somewhat statutory, not that they just wanna do it a different way, you know, kind of stuff. Because that, that, that really sets up the county, and Kelly, you've made the point before, that if an issue comes down the pike is we saw with the sexual harassment lawsuit and stuff like that, it comes through the county, even though, you know, the sheriff or whoever, they may be named in terms of having to absorb and manage that litigation, it pretty much comes to the county to do that. So I think the expectation that unless it's statutory, that makes a difference, that all county offices and departments and such should adopt this handbook. Does that make sense? Okay. All right, but yeah, no, I will definitely, I'll look, look at what we can do to do some sort of a disclaimer so that folks know with an elected office to check with their offices too. This next comment has to do with county vehicle use and such. I'm not sure where this, the provision came from about, about debiting their budget by five thousand dollars for violations and stuff. I, I don't know where that grew out of. But I, this is one area that I saw the potential, especially for the sheriff's office or something to push back on the B O C C's authority to do that, because it's, it's a disciplinary type of deduction. And so I'm not sure about that. And I don't know if y'all had any insights, especially you, Kayla, for as long as you've been, where that came from.
I, I think it may have just come from like, you know, another county may have had that in their, in their handbook to try to limit the amount of potential abuse to county assets, but I, I have a tendency to agree with you. I, I think it's fine to take that out.
Any thoughts, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, that, that seems very prescriptive and threatening. That might not help our relations with other elected officials.
Yeah, I, I just, I think, you know, the noted, potentially another way to approach it would be if it results in, if a violation results in an expense to the county and that elected off, official doesn't take appropriate action or something, then that, that they will be responsible for that expense, that, because you directly tie it to, you know, damages, if you will, to the county. That might be an option, but it's just, I think the way this read was a little, little harsh, and I'm not sure enforceable with it. So, so is the consensus then to go on and, and delete it? Okay, I, I'm sorry, I'm like, I, I need to look up and see if you're nodding your All right.
Yeah, I think moving that, and you know, I mean, I don't know how big a problem this, I mean, I don't, this isn't happening like ten times a day, so I don't I think if it becomes an issue and we can't resolve it, you know, amicably with the department, then we, then, you know, we can, if it escalates, we can kind of do a standalone decision as the board about what to do. I don't think we need to get into it too much.
Yeah, well, and I was, these type of weird kind of one-offs like this usually come out of something happening, and so that's why I was And so that's why I was wondering maybe if somebody had taken a county vehicle and was involved in an accident. And their supervisor knew that they had been using the vehicle for, you know, stuff they weren't supposed to or or what. So. I thought maybe that's where it came out of. Um, alright, let's keep scrolling. Uh, the continuity of um, operations language, I didn't, I just had some tweaks to that, but I didn't see a problem. I presume that um, that was something that was requested be added. Didn't know if y'all had any. Comments or stuff on that. Okay. Um, revisions to the multiple positions with the county, the the way Catherine. Um, revise that I, like I said, just a couple of tweaks with that. Have any specific comments or concerns? I'm presuming y'all don't either. I'm sorry, Jeff.
That's specifically about um, that's specifically about um. Like multiple part-time. I mean, I assume like, I mean, you can't hold two.
Well, I and I think really where it comes from is, you know, if you're working currently in the county as an admin position full-time. And then you're working as a recreation referee at night and you're refereeing a game and they pay the refs as as part of the programming cost. And how are you paid for that? Are you paid for that at an hour time, at an overtime premium because you're still, you're still a county employee? Or are you paid at a flat dollar amount because you're roughing a game, you know, um, type of thing? So I think that's kind of where this comes from. Right, right, Chris?
Yeah, yeah. So what it is precisely what Kayla just said and. The the issue is that when you have folks that are doing jobs that are somewhat similar or within the same department. You know, to where that's really where the question comes up. Okay, let's say they're an admin in the recreation department and. But they're also, you know, qualified to do other things. It's just how related the positions are. And so. That's a situation where the approval for hiring someone to work two different positions really needs to be vetted. And any information put in their um, offer letter or whatever about the. To make sure they understand this isn't an extension of your normal daytime job or whatever, that this is considered separate employment. With the county. And so, you know, if you end up working over forty hours a week, you will not get paid overtime for doing that work. Yeah, or if you can't do that, if they're too closely related where they may be doing and and a lot of it has to do. Are they going to be doing the same kind of work in this separate job as they would in their normal, the regular job? In which case, then it has to be managed to where they are not permitted to work any overtime without some sort of approval. In advance, so that you you know, you don't end up in that that situation of having a bunch of overtime exposure without. Um, any type of approval. Let's see. Interim upgrades, um. Yeah, and this was just that I I agree, you know, as just at the beginning, trying to have a document that's somewhat of a living. Living document, not having to modify it every time something changes. This notion of putting in um. A specific rate increase for some sort of an interim and upgrade. I I I agree that it's a. Shouldn't be stated here, but also agree that um, H R needs to have some sort of a process for reviewing these to make sure that. You don't end up with one person getting paid a dollar ninety and another person getting two fifty or something like that for doing the same kind of work. The other question I had about that too is if there's an interim um, upgrade. Does that need to be posted for everybody might be eligible for that work under the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act now? Because if it's considered some work, i- if it's an upgrade. And and maybe one thing you might want to say instead of interim upgrade, maybe interim reassignment. Um, because if it's characterizes an upgrade, that might trigger the obligation to. Post it to everybody in the county under the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act. Kayla, any thoughts on that?
No, I haven't actually considered that.
What do you think about changing that to interim reassignment instead of interim upgrade? Just it's a language, because the 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 text talks about employees may temporarily reassigned to other positions and duties to meet. So.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I think, yeah, or even just assigned.
Interim.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. Um. Alright, let's see, scrolling, sc- oh, sorry, went too quick there. Um. Anything through the disciplinary action part? Um. Just moving some stuff around mostly are my changes. And then, um. Talking about forms, there's we definitely, there definitely needs to be some sort of standard. Uh, action form taken, uh, you know, for any action taken. Um, a- and that's what. I think Kayla, you had mentioned that you thought there were forms. And I tried to look through the files and copies of stuff I've got and I couldn't find any. So I don't know if you you have them or you're aware where they may live. If not, I can certainly work with um, Hannah once she's on board to to create a good form for. Everybody to use for disciplinary, you know, progressive discipline and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I don't think right now that we really have any forms for that. So I think if if we could um. Design those forms with Hannah once she gets on on board, that would be great. I would actually task her potentially with that being one of her first tasks, maybe. Um, Jeff is to develop some of those standardized forms for like progressive discipline. Um, professional development, professional improvement, uh, you know, professional improvement plan or development plan. Um, that'd be great if we could do that right away.
And my suggestion with that too is have, make sure she she is connected and has access to H R plus, the library. Because they're going to have a lot of sample forms for that kind of stuff. And it, so that way it'll help expedite. She can take and look at what they have available and then kind of put her edits in it to customize the county. Then I just need to take a quick look to make sure we haven't missed anything, you know, on the legal compliance side with it. Um, and so that might help. If that's going to be a priority, that might help move that along quicker for her instead of trying to create something on her own.
Yep, adding that to the thirty day list.
Okay. Alright. Alright, let's see here. Scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. And some of the stuff, you know, you'll see some of the changes that I made, especially when we're talking about harassment and stuff. But keep in mind not to limit everything to sexual harassment. Um, because there are so many other forms of actionable harassment, you know, both the E O C and the the Supreme Court. Has specifically called out sexual harassment, but that doesn't mean that other forms of harassment aren't just as egregious. So. Um, just to to kind of keep that in mind. So if you see like where I've deleted reference to sexual harassment, that's because it should be harassment in general and not just. For that, um.
Have a form for employees to document harassment? Or or perceived harassment to to. No. A pattern or how do people, how do employees keep documentation of like. You know, perceived harassment, I guess. I mean, I'm not, not trying to say. I'm I'm just trying to give people or employees, you know, the tools that they need to have a safe. Workspace or a space where they can say like, hey, look at all this documentation I have from this individual. How do I make this stop?
Right.
So that we can start to detect a pattern.
Well, and I think, I think it might be okay to develop a form for supervisors and H R to use for reports of harassment. But not to have one for employees to use, because what you want to do is, you know. It it, number one, when they start creating that, there's, they're creating evidence, if you will. And so it'd be much better to have the control over how that information is compiled. Through either their supervisor or H R and in it, H R should always be involved in those situations. So perhaps doing some sort of a form for the supervisors to make sure they collect all the the basic informations, because that's. One of the things too is if if you're in, let's say, Roden Bridge and you've never had to handle a harassment or discrimination claim. What information you may think needs to be collected can be totally different than what law actually wants. So I think it makes sense to have some sort of a guide, guidance form that says. You know, how to handle and thus or allegations of treatment or harassment, discrimination, that kind of stuff. Um, but not that the employee would fill that out.
Okay, I think that makes a ton of sense. I just want to to be able to, um, you know, appropriately document that so that we don't. You know, keep finding ourselves in that catch twenty-two, but I think that'll, that'll also happen with, you know, appropriate. Annual training, um, and somebody that has the capacity to schedule that.
Well, and that's, that's one thing I mentioned before, that when we get ready to roll this out to the employees. I think it it would be really beneficial that we do a training with all department heads manager and they get mandatory. Cause technically the county is supposed to do annual training on harassment prevention anyway, in order to be able to substantiate an affirmative defense that. The supervisory management level staff and all were aware of their obligations with reports of discrimination or harassment. So I I think that's something we should do and and it should be planned to be done every year at some point. Just so you maintain that affirmative defense. Um, and so I I think when this is rolled out, it gives you an opportune time to try to. To do that, but it needs to be mandatory and we could do a couple of different sessions so that if somebody's not available. On one day, they can do the other, but it not to make it voluntary that that. It needs to be mandatory. And that's, I do a lot of that for some of my other clients, um, that we just do our dog and pony show every year. And try to freshen it up enough so everybody's not bored stiff, but there's just certain specific information and training you have to do with them to remind them of their obligations. Um, in order to establish that defense. So that that would be my recommendation. Anything else on the uh, disciplinary stuff?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, um, conflict resolution stuff. Um, separations, you know, um. One of the things I really think needs to be done, it's not directly addressed in here, but. The payroll change form or whatever is used right now for separations probably isn't the best. And so I would recommend that be revisited and perhaps revised. Um, because just saying payroll change form, it affers, it's just a a matter of their compensation. When really there's other information you want to collect at separation. So that would be another suggested form to develop for everybody to to use.
Could you make a note of that, Chris? Cause I think also it. Is it worthwhile adding in the separation segment, section? Um, that if you are a county employee. And you've been terminated by one department, including an elected official's department. Like, is it appropriate and is it legal for another elected official or department to review your termination status? And make a determination on your potential future employment? So like, if you work for. Like the clerk and recorder's office and you're terminated for for an offense in the handbook, you know. Um, and the clerk determines that you're ineligible for rehire and she marks that on your form. Would we as the B O C C be able to pull that person's file and look at that form and say? Okay, the clerk said because of this documentation, this individual isn't ineligible for rehire in the clerk's office. And we will take that into consideration and of you trying to be rehired in like public health or human services?
Yeah, no, I think that's fine. And and I, you know, the the notion of somebody, you know. A department head who gets crossways from an employee and either fires them or they resign. Getting their nose bent out of shape and deciding they're going to blackball them from any future employment with the county. Is probably not where you want to be, because again, rejecting someone for employment, it it needs to be somewhat job-related. The reason you have to have a justifiable basis as to why they weren't hired, especially if they're qualified. So I I agree with that. That's one of the reasons that I mentioned that I think you need a new form here, um, to be able to address that. And if they do say not eligible for reemployment, that they have to be specific as to why. I- is it a performance issue? Because it it like, if you have somebody that's hired into public health. To do a job and they're, they end up not having the skills and ability, that's very different from them not being eligible for rehire into that position. But they might be a great basic admin or something, you know, so I I think that makes a lot of sense. So yeah, I made a note that we need a. A new form for separations.
And and also that I mentioned that um, to to Hannah, and that's a bullet for the sort of. Somewhere in the thirty, sixty, ninety day.
Right.
Getting some clearer guidance on that kind of termination. State status eligible for rehire or as a consultant.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, no, I I agree. And and you know, really, for somebody who, if it's marked, they're not eligible for. Rehire, you really want to collect the information as to why then? Just in case if down the road, they come back and apply for something else and that supervisor's no longer with the county or whatever. So that you have the documentation establishing what it was that made them ineligible for for rehire.
Right, because you don't want to put the county in a position either where, you know, this person isn't eligible for rehire because of. You know, breach of confidentiality and it's not marked in their file and it's been ten years and they want to get a job in human services. Where they're around sensitive information every day, like that puts the county in a very risky position too.
Yeah, I agree. Alright, next comment I had, it had to do with rest and meal periods, because I didn't quite understand the way it was um, written. Um, cause it's like, you know, full-time employees are, get two short rest periods. And I put the not exceed the fifteen minutes each. And the reason for that is that. Those type of rest periods are compensable. It's only if, once you get to like a meal break of thirty minutes or more, that you don't have to pay them for that time. And so that's why you need to define what that essentially means. So. That's why, you know, you've got full-time employees that get two short rest periods of fifteen minutes. Um, and then, you know, the meal period and such too. Um. When they had the the notion of them having to schedule it. Um, the the deleted information, I said, to the extent possible, rest periods were provided in the middle of work periods. Um, that didn't make sense if they're getting a meal period, um, because that's typically going to be somewhat in the middle, because. It's supposed to be, you know, you get that break after every four hours worked. So, um, I just didn't know if there was some other reason why that needed to be in there. E- especially since it says supervisors will advise the, you know, rest, regular rest period length and schedule. So it's it's still within discretion and supervisors to say, you need, this is when we need you to take your breaks so we make sure everything else is covered. But I didn't know if there was some other reason to have that in there. I'm presuming not. Y'all are both looking out the window right along here. Um.
It was so loud and it sounded so like. Magnified, I guess. I don't know.
I didn't hear what whatever drew y'all's attention, so. Okay.
There's something about our wonderful single pane windows does seem to like. It's like it's in here.
Yeah, echo, you're in the echo chamber now. So scrolling right along, just some tweaks with um, some of this stuff. On-call, um, callback time. Um, again, I I agree with her in terms of. The specific compensation amounts, because some of this may depend on the job they're in and what F S L A. Um, or yeah, F L S A provisions, regulations, as well as Colorado uh, employment laws apply. So. That is.
Did we, we agreed to put in here? Um. Those on-call policies that may be. Applicable to individual departments, right? Like human services for. Or caseworkers?
I think would, again, I think that might be similar to the other thing. Maybe we put in here. Um, a a disclaimer as to uh, that. Certain departments may have different policies and procedures.
Okay.
I I I, I think it would be confusing if you tried to add in what each. Um, office might have or do with that.
But then give the flexibility to like the rec department to give. Their staff like Karen and Felicia. you know, an on-call premium if you're on-call because of programming happening over the weekend or somebody renting a facility and that means that you can't, you know, leave town for the weekend and you can't do anything for the weekend. So we're going to compensate you at fifty dollars for the weekend or whatever. That would give them the internal ability to create that policy within their department. And it wouldn't have to be something uniform between, across all departments. It doesn't have to be treated the same way across all departments, right?
Right, no, that, and that's what, I mean, you have to be careful if it's similar reasons or whatever. Um, but you can, I mean, you can have specific policies for different types of on-call time and call back time and stuff. Depending on what the obligation would be. That's another area where if it's going to differ, you want to put that in the job description and stuff, so that you have that, that specified somewhere. So you don't end up having the supervisor or wha- or whatever determining what the, the compensation or when it will trigger for that compensation.
So I just get in my head around this. I remember this discussion before, um.
I, I mean, I just hate to get that the regulations and stuff on this are, are pretty, pretty dense. And so I'd hate for us to put too much stuff in there because it'd be too easy to, to, uh, misunderstand. And so I think we could probably give more guidance to supervisors and stuff for their departments as to how to handle it. But again, I think it'll depend on the context of why the employee is on-call or maybe subject to callback.
Can we say, I mean, not to just punt it, but I mean, can we say something like, you know, department directors shall work with the H R department to determine, you know, appropriate and equitable approaches that meet the needs of each department and are consistent with relevant state and federal law or something like that.
Well, I think that would be something good to put in guidance given to the managers and supervisors, not necessarily in your handbook.
Yeah.
So maybe we do a, a, develop some guidance for managers and supervisory level folks as to how it, to administer on-call and, uh, callbacks stuff.
So, 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 so is the lang- I, I, I see where you're going. So is the language for the handbook maybe like just super general, like, you know? So, some positions may require either scheduled or unscheduled requests to be on-call, you know, these arrangements will be worked out, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah. So I'll put, I'll, I'll add some disclaimer type language in there about, you know, that departments might have other, other approaches or specific policies and procedures for on-call, callback time and, a- and inviting them to ask their su- their direct supervisor or manager for more information on that. And then, like I said, develop some, uh, guidance for the managers, how to handle that. All right, um, let's see. Think the, all the stuff with the overtime and stuff, the changes were just to make sure that it was consistent with what the regulations are. Anything in that section that y'all wanted to? Okay, I'm presuming no. Um, time recording, uh, you know, Catherine, the, and, and, well, technically there's not a direct prohibition against having exempt employees keep time records. Um, having them do something as specific as clocking in and out. Um, I wouldn't recommend just because that, that is often seen and there are a lot of cases where people have challenged their exempt status and they've used the, the fact that they required to punch time clock as evidence that they weren't truly exempt employees. Um, so that's, that's the one thing I had, uh, I just changed that instead of saying employees are required to clock in and clock out. Uh, that they're required to record each workday. Um, and so I, I think that's more consistent and doesn't open the, the potential for a, a challenge to an exempt status. Any questions or?
I think, I think really the intent there is just to ensure that we're accurately report, recording exempt employees P T O. So like if they're taking a vacation day or something like that, that, that we're really reporting that. So I think, I think if you make that change, Chris, that's fine. I don't have any issues there.
That's right. A- and so should I add something in this first sentence, Kayla, about as well as any, any leave, um, on? Okay, starting in time during, there's, start, starting in time and during unpaid breaks as well as any leave use whether paid or unpaid. Okay. Okay, we'll do that. Time sheet stuff, um, deductions and stuff like that. Anything as I'm scrolling here, jump out, let me know. Um, we get into employee benefits. I just added, just to make sure that you're not locking yourself into things that's, I added the phrase about summary of benefits offered and reserving the right to change or terminate in its sole discretion. So that there's not some sort of a notice, the, in notice requirement inferred. Um, yeah, and the retirement plan Catherine noted in there and I, I don't know in terms of, um, and this is one where we will, because they're the same, we will take out the regular three-quarter time here. Where it talks about the retirement plan eligibility, because it's the same as regular full-time eligibility.
Okay, and I can confirm that with, uh, with Cora as well.
Okay.
Or I'll have Hannah do that. I can help her get in contact with them and get familiar with our plan.
Along that line, um, Sarah sent me an email yesterday with a question about, um, uh, elected officials, this next area. Um, about the, you know, whether, because it says all elected officials become participants as of the date that they're sworn in. Is there the possibility under the retirement plan for them to opt out of participation? Because it, it talks about, I guess, from, you know, the county contribution and the employee contribution. Uh, so if participation requires, uh, an employee contribution, is there the option for them to opt out and not choose to participate?
I don't think in our retirement plan documents that there is an option for employees or elected officials to opt out. Um, elected, the only difference is that the, that, uh, regular employees will have a vesting period, um, that's broken out over, I believe, four or five years. But elected officials are vested one hundred percent, um, immediately. So that's the difference there. I don't know about the participation and the requirement of participation, um, but I can get our plan document over to you, Chris, so you can see that.
Yeah, please do, because apparently the coroner nominee appointee or whatever raised that. And so since that's somebody who will be, we hope, starting soon, I don't know if his criminal history check has come back, if all of that's been cleared yet. But, uh, for his onboarding, that was one question he asked, if he could opt out of it. Um, so yeah, it'd be great if I could get a copy of that plan.
Yeah.
Okay. So leave, um, so Kayla, this is the section where we added in the provision about, um, making sure that leave used is consistent with the number of hours that employees regularly scheduled to work. So we'll end up in the same situation we had with the sheriff's office of folks who are scheduled to work ten or twelve hours, taking the daily even only getting payday.
Yeah.
Um, so. I hope that that, uh, that both.
What's that, Chris?
No, I was just going to say, just to make sure that what I put in here reflects what you and I talked about in terms of, um, trying to address that issue. Cause I put in the policy, but also an example so that, um, you know, that, that it will flow from the number of hours they normally work.
Yeah, and so I think, um, you know, after talking through that with Crystal a little bit, there was, um, you know, there's, there's the financial side of like, hey, we only budgeted for you to work forty-hour work weeks. Um, you know, or whatever that might be. And so that's kind of what we pay you at. Um, but looking at the long-term financial impact, um, you know, the, the county carries that liability regardless. And so it also does not incentivize employees to take vacation, which is what we were seeing in the sheriff's office of, you know, well, then I'll just shift, I'll just switch you shifts so that I still get a paycheck and I'm not going to take any vacation time. Um, but, um, but it also, you know, if you're normally scheduled to work forty-eight hours, then you're only getting paid for four, for forty instead of forty-eight, you're getting shorted. And you're not, you know, the time isn't being used appropriately, um, in accordance with your current work schedule.
All right, so I, I think I captured that in this, this addition, so that, that should help with the issue. Um, the next thing, the paid vacation leave, you know, this is one thing that it's just, y'all, the, the county's incredibly generous as to all the different kinds of leave, paid leave that it offers. Um, but it's like the, you know, ha- it, most employers, i- it is incredibly rare to find an employer that offers paid vacation leave and paid P T O. Um, typically it's one or the other and, and often with P T O, at least in the past, you would do that because you didn't want to offer separate vacation and sick leave. Now with the Healthy Families, uh, Act, you know, you probably want to retain this, the sick leave accrual stuff. But the question is, do you really need to keep paid vacation and paid P T O? Or is that something that can be combined?
You're talking about the personal days?
Well, it's, yeah, paid vacation leave and, yeah, the paid vacation leave and then also, um, paid personal leave.
I personally feel like it's a duplication of leave with vacation time. However, with that being said, I really feel like employees will feel like that is a reduction in their benefits. I don't know if there's a way for us to grandfather in the, uh, um, eventual removal of personal leave. Like maybe we grandfather everybody in that's currently employed and give them those hours in their vacation bucket. And then going forward, we just eliminate it and not offer it to any new hires. I don't know, uh, really the, the reasoning behind the personal leave and the allocation that you see down there, um, was an opportunity for us to offer some paid time off to part-time people.
Okay.
So, so they were offered that, those hours if you were a regular part-time person. And I think we were thinking about like some of the custodial staff that seemed to work like a reduced number of hours, like twenty hours a week, but still may need to take some time off to go to a doctor's appointment and wouldn't be able to return for their shift. And so we wanted to ensure that they had, um, some kind of method to, to have a full paycheck.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Without.
Well, and that's what's weird though, it's, you've got it, but, but it looks like paid personal leave is only available for regular full-time and three-quarter.
And it, it should be for part-time as well, I think.
We've got sick leave for part-time.
Really?
Yeah, but I don't see that in paid personal leave. And so what, one of the questions I had, it, the whole reason for that was vacation accrues on a pay period basis. So that you have to build up, you know, if you're a new employee, you have to build up some time before you can take it off of pay, whereas paid personal leave, they get hired and automatically have this time off. So I, I think you could potentially combine the two. If it's just going to be for full-time or full-time vacation and paid personal leave, you could combine the two to essentially say that upon hire, you know, you'll get an initial allocation of this number of days and then accrue the rest of it, you know, on the schedule that you have in the vacation policy and make it, i- instead of having vacation, make it a, a paid, paid time off policy um, that combines those two.
Well, and that might be appropriate to do, Chris, because I think really the idea behind that also was we had a probationary period of six months where you weren't eligible to take any vacation time or be paid out for any vacation time when you were initially employed. And so I think there was an unrealistic expectation that you, as a human being, wouldn't have anything happen in your life for six months or, you know, you would risk termination. And so I think, you know, also wanted to offer a little bit of equity to say, you know, we understand that things happen and sometimes we can't always control the things that happen to us. And so here's, here's some time to cover that. Um, that being said, that was before the state vacation law changed, where now you don't get to retain vacation time for a probationary period. If you're hired and you accrue vacation, it's paid out to you regardless. Um, you know, like it, it basically eliminates that probationary period. So if, if you're hired and you're still in a six-month probationary period and you're terminated, we still pay out the vacation time now because that's what the law says. So, I, I mean, I guess I would be personally fine with doing that. What's that?
I, I'm sorry. I thought you were finished. My internet keeps going in and out. Um, I was going to say, you, you have to pay out both vacation and personal leave under these policies. So combining it, if you wanted to have, you know, have to where you combine them and if the concern is they wouldn't have any time to use for personal needs upfront, let everybody who's hired get the, you know, the P, you know, paid personal leave um, for full-time employees of, you know, the schedule that you have on there for if they're hired, what period of the time of the year they get. And then allow them to accrue based on the paid vacation leave schedule that you have in the policy as well.
Could we?
Was this situation?
Could we maybe think about eliminating that January first potentially for full-time employees, since they have the vacation bank? But leaving that as like the regular part-time vacation schedule, part-time employees vacation schedule. I don't know, because I just don't think, you know, we have some part-time employees that are, that have worked here for like five, six, seven years. Um, but I don't, I don't know that they should be eligible for, you know, a hundred and fifty-two hours of vacation. Um, but they should have something.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, Kayla, the way the policy is in the current handbook and in this one, part-time people don't. It's only regular full-time and three-quarter time people that accrue are eligible for vacation. It's only sick leave that part-time people are eligible to accrue.
Okay.
Plan A and Plan B for sick leave.
Okay. Can we just think about that a little bit? Cause I really, I want to make sure that we do what's most equitable, but I, I don't want employees to feel like we're taking away a benefit from them either.
Sure, well, and that I agree. Uh, and that's why I was thinking if you combine in the vacation and the P T O to where they would get, you know, they won't lose that benefit. It'll just be combined and, and it, it goes all together. But yeah, think about it and then before it's finalized, we can revisit.
Or, I mean, just given that sensitivity that, you know, employees are going to have without feeling like things might be getting taken away from them. Um, I mean, yeah, my experience is people guard that suspiciously and firmly. Uh, I, I just wonder if we need to, well, I, I, I don't want to hold up the rest of the handbook for figuring out any change. I wonder if for now, we can put in whatever it is we're doing now and, and, and just take this up as a thing we know we need to work on. It, it, I mean, I don't know, I, I said we'd want to have some discussions with departments a little bit and not like just declare a change in this. I think that's going to raise more hackles than almost anything else.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So Chris, maybe let's just leave this for right now. Um, and perhaps this is something we tackle with full compensation when Hannah comes on, uh, because. when Hannah comes on, because it is part of the compensation and benefit package. Maybe when she comes on and we start working through some of that a little bit, a little bit more. She'll be able to, to help us, you know, really hone this in a little bit more.
Well.
For now.
Okay, we can do, and then maybe perhaps if you decide to make a change, a good way to explain that would be to change it January 1 and have it be a reflection of the budget cycle and, you know, reconsidering all of that kind of stuff. So I'll just leave it for now, the way it's, it's written. So we'll just do that. Holiday leave, again, you know, all of, all of these leave situations where it says people who are eligible for it, I'm going to take out these where references regular three-quarter time. Because if it's, you know, regular full-time folks, if we're going to redefine those as anybody who works 30 to 40 hours, you know, we'll, we'll want to take that out as well. And the holiday thing, when it talks about the number of hours, that, I think that is, maybe what we do is take out the reference to regular three-quarter time. But then know that it's, that their holiday leave will be predated days based on the days hours regularly scheduled to work. So it falls back into that same, you know, that, that they would get the same number of hours as if they, when they're, when they're accruing it, as if they use it type of thing for holidays, right? Because I think we had talked about that too, so that they won't get shorted on their holiday pay too. So.
That sounds good. I have to cut out in about 10 minutes to pick up kids from Rocky's Rock, so.
Yeah, so let's, let's super slide through here. I think those were some of the biggest thing. A lot of the stuff is just to make sure it's consistent with requirements. Lots of leave stuff. And so one question I had, we were talking about unpaid time off here. The difference between unpaid time off and unpaid leave of absence. Why are there two sections on that?
Can you scroll down just a little bit, Chris? Because I think, okay, because they're both the unpaid leave, okay, they read about the same, right?
Yep.
I would just remove the unpaid leave of absence.
Well, and what I can do is I can look at them and see if they need to be combined. If there's language that needs to be combined so that everybody knows it's the kind of same stuff. Or if we do, like you said, just delete the, you know, the unpaid time, well, unpaid time off versus unpaid leave. My suggestion would be to delete the unpaid time off and keep the unpaid leave of absence.
I'm fine with that.
I'll look at the, the language.
Yeah, and maybe, well, there's, I can't see it all at the same time, but there's that paragraph at the bottom with mentioning how it relates to FMLA.
Yep. And that, that's why I was like thinking, thinking that you would keep the unpaid leave of absence. And then that's why I'm saying I'll look at these to see if we need to combine language in there to make sure that we've covered for FMLA.
Okay. I think if you just take that small piece about the maximum absent or whatever that is and make sure that that's incorporated, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, no, I think that works too. And stuff. FMLA, a lot of the change, you know, there weren't a ton of changes, but some of it was just reorganizing and, you know, duplicate the, all that that I took out is pretty much duplicated down below that chunk of stuff. It's the same, stated again. So that was that part of it. All this FMLA stuff is just to make sure it's consistent. This, so maternity leave, you know, under FMLA, they can use accrued leave, both sick leave and vacation. Any other, they can use any paid leave they have accrued. But this just had accrued paid leave and personal leave for the non-FMLA maternity leave. Are they, is there a reason why vacation wasn't included as something they could use for their maternity leave?
Yeah, we allow them to use all their leave. So we typically take, you know, sick leave first and then personal time because you lose that at the end of the year and then vacation time. So.
Reads, should we add on accrued paid sick leave, vacation and personal leave?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Right. Going, trying to find the, and I'm sorry, like I said, stop me if I'm going way too fast with some of this stuff. Just to make sure, get to all the comments before we have to log off some pretty much, for comments first, then I can go back up if there are any. A lot of this electronic resources type stuff and then of course the acknowledgement, which is very long, it's the longest acknowledgement I think I've ever, ever seen in terms of for the harassment stuff. But I, I mean, that's an area you can't really do too much on. And then the acknowledgement of the handbook and stuff. Was there anything else that I zipped through? Go back up to the leave stuff here that we didn't stop on that you wanted to talk about?
No, I don't think so. I think I just wanted to make sure that the leave was in there appropriately. And that was it.
Okay, what I'll do is I will go in and make some of the changes we talked about today that I haven't already made and then recirculate another markup and clean version to the three of you, three commissioners. Since Sarah didn't comment, make comments and stuff so that she'll have that opportunity. There's still something else she wants on there. And then we can figure out, do you want to send? My suggestion would be to send it out to the department heads or whatever the next step before you actually decide on the final draft and adopting it. So does that, that make sense? Sound like a good plan? All good?
Yes, I think, yeah, something similar like we did for their procurement policy.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay. All right, so I will do that. If you think of something else that you, we didn't talk about or that you want to check to see how it's done or whatever, shoot me an email or something and let me know and I'll follow up and, and get back to you on that. All right?
That sounds fantastic. Thanks for taking the time to go through that with us today, Chris.
But well, I'm happy to. As I've said before, it's a very important document, so let's get it right. And so Jeff, Hannah, still scheduled to start Thursday?
Yep, yep. So she has an email that I think just went live. I was, next on my to-do list was to connect you and her with that email. I know it's live. I don't know if she has access to it yet, but.
Okay.
But I wanted to use that, not her personal, just the things, you know, things.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so just let me know once you get the revised version of this too, if you want me to go on and send a copy to her. Or do you want me to go on and copy her in anticipation of her starting with the?
I think you just start copying her, I'll, 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 you'll have her email in a few minutes, so.
Yay.
We're getting there. It, it'll be, we're getting there. All right, folks.
I think I sent you, yeah, and I, I sent you that kind of working list of the whole slew of things. So I'm sure there's a few things missing, but there's surely enough to get started.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at that as well. Let me know if anything else comes up and otherwise, y'all enjoy the rest of the day.
All right, thanks you too.
Later, bye.
Bye.